Great, all right. Well, welcome, everybody. As I mentioned before we started the official meeting, Sarah is going to probably be 10 minutes late, but we can get started. Hi, come on in, no, you're, we're just starting. So let me call the meeting to order at 6:01. Can somebody take minutes or notes? Should we have when we're done? Is somebody willing to do that? Excellent, thank you. Good, okay, yeah, perfect. So basically, just, let's make sure we capture everybody who's here. And then if there's sort of critical items, capture those, that would be perfect. Okay. So then let me start with oral communication. So Howard, can you see if there's any hands raised? Are there any members of the public that want to speak on something that's not on the agenda for today, which is discussing the committee operations?
There are no hand raised.
Okay, great.
Oh wait, now there is.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, I was looking at the agenda and I didn't see a lot of detail and I'm hoping for more detail in the future. So we can actually see what will be discussed.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else?
No, that is it. She's the only person online.
Okay, great. All right, so then I'm gonna just sit down. And like I said, Sarah is gonna be here. You guys all got the meeting, right? You should have received those, which basically had everybody's sort of comments on it. And it had the sort of the alternate structure and stuff that we talked about. So the goal of today's meeting is just to get feedback. I think we got written feedback from, I want to say six out of 19, something like that. So I'm not sure whether it all got recorded, but the goal today is to kind of get a sense for which committees would like to do non-Brown Act, which one to stay Brown Act. And then try to work toward a sense for, you know, on these now, non-Brown Act. I mean, we want them still to be open to the public. I mean, the point is not to turn these into some secret set of meetings. It's just to make it easier for people to volunteer. So I think we want to find that balance between how can we make it easier for people to volunteer and make sure we have collaborative meetings without, you know, turn this into, oh, there's a bunch of secret meetings going on. And so that's, you know, in my mind, after we have the general discussion, I think that's, it's just meant to be an open discussion to kind of talk through among the people that are here and, you know, bring forward what you guys talked about at your different committees. Hello, come on in. Just grab some chairs. All right, so with that, I guess what I'd like to do is, Judith, we talked about having you just chair. So, I mean, I think it's just, I think it just kind of, exactly, just kind of keep the discussion going and sort of round robin. What's going to be difficult here is, we've got one, maybe I can get a second mic. But yeah, I guess we have that mic, I'll get that one working and we can pass it around, so, okay, cool.
Right, maybe we should start by going around and doing that. So I'm Judith Murphy, I'm on conservation, but I'm not the chair, so I'm not here representing conservation. I was just asked to chair this committee.
George Savage, Finance Committee.
I'm Chet Ruckier, Geological Safety Committee.
Antision Sasu, the Open Space Committee. Louder. Like I mean it. Antision Sasu, it's the Open Space Committee. And I'll spell that.
I'm Catherine McGill with Conservation.
Nan Shasta, Geological Safety.
Jim Lutman, Historical Resources.
I'm Jerry Sheffron and I'm standing in for Dale Plow for the EPC.
I am Jennifer Hammer, Wildlife Preparedness Committee.
Hi, I'm Jean Isaacson, standing in for Teresa Godfrey, with the longest title of any of you. It's the Woodside Highlands Road Maintenance District Resident Advisory Committee.
I'm Ed Holland, Bicycle Pedestrian Traffic Safety.
Okay, so to get us going, I thought this most going to be just a round robin. It strikes me that most had an idea about whether they wanted to be non-Brown Act or Brown Act and that we won't be able to make, none of us will be able to make that final decision until we hone exactly what that means. Part of this meeting, or the beginning of this meeting, is to talk about what that means. And you know, what, how much slack will those committees have and how much slack will they not have? And does that meet your requirement? So, I thought Sarah was going to come with a few handouts, but before, there was that grid that talked about what the differences were between the Brown Act Committee and the non-Brown Act Committee. And that got edited based on what our comments had been. But I think the, you know, every committee, maybe the third column and even the third column, needs to have transparency and accountability. And you can't sign up to be a Brown Act Committee thinking that you will no longer have transparency. And I think some of the people were hoping that the slackness might stand out to not having to do minutes or not having to be open to the public, that kind of thing. And I think that's probably not where it is. So the devil's in the details, as always. I thought we ought to start by going around, maybe too, I hear it so loud here. By going around and maybe just saying what the, what the couple of most important things that came out of your committee discussion, what those things were in terms of why you wanted your committee to be a non-Brown Act Committee, if that's what it was, what you hoped to gain. Because I think we're going to have to be really precise about what, you know, what the parameters actually are for what you're going to have to do anyway. And we'll have to rewrite the handbook to do that, but that's the next step. First, we got to figure out what we want and then we got to codify it in the handbook. So okay, I was going to give this to Ed.
Well, BPTS is in the position of being a designated required committee and has some roles that have to be under the Brown Act. So it was a little difficult for us to discuss that with any overall meaning, but I think there was a desire to find ways that maybe subcommittees or events planning and things could be done without Brown Act requirements, where they're not really looking at determining town policy or those, those kind of sensitive areas that might be viewed as conspiring behind the scenes if you were to hold a meeting.
My understanding is that subcommittees are absolutely not subject to Brown Act. As long as you're careful to be a subcommittee, you've got less than a quorum of the committee, et cetera, you can.
Yeah, that's my understanding too.
Yeah. So, anything else?
Not particularly, no.
Okay, well, let's pass you around. George?
Yeah, our, the Finance Committee was interested in a couple of things. One was topical that we don't have the rigidity of noticing on that particular agenda item. We're completely happy with public participation, think that's essential. Think having agendas in advance is essential and notice of meetings. But we would like to also have the flexibility. You could zoom in, which would make it much easier to schedule. Because many of us, of course, have to go on trips that sometimes are.
And notice at the time of the agenda, on the agenda, you can't. So you can't go on the weekend and have a Monday meeting if it wasn't on your agenda. Where you are and.
I, my understanding is that if you want, if you wanted to attend as a committee member remotely, you have to publish in the packet the address you're going to be at so the public can join you, which joining the, in my, the public somewhere would be kind of hard.
It just makes it very cumbersome.
Just when, as the chair, I've tried to explore having committee members in remotely. There's been questions like, oh, is, are they sick? Like, there might be other regulations around it, but I'm, I'm not aware of, but it seems like there might be.
I think Chris is right, it's not, it's not impossible, it's just sort of a pain sometimes. Yeah. Okay, Lucy. Are both, are both of you going to speak up for geologic safety? Are you both geologic safety? Yes.
Okay. We've, we have been a small committee. And we have recently enlarged the committee to seven so that at least three of us can get together without disturbing the Brown Act. And this has just happened, and so we are looking forward to a better future. People have been coming to our meetings and we appreciate that. We, we are very concerned about public safety in this town and we think that much attention should be paid to geologic problems. We are working hard on them and look forward to a good future.
So I think there's a question, under the Brown Act, there's a question about whether, about the legality of that, that, that if you read it, it says, if you don't have a quorum, you can't have a meeting. So, so a created subcommittee, a subcommittee created at, at a meeting can, can meet without Brown Act concerns, but just an ad hoc group of you that came together to have a meeting and then there's no quorum. I think the rules say you can't have a meeting, isn't that accurate?
Is if you've noticed a meeting and you don't have a quorum, you can't hold that meeting.
Right.
I mean, if you have two people who want to, who are on a committee, who want to just talk to each other, you don't have to notice so that you can get to talk to each other. It's just you can't have a quorum of the committee getting together without it being.
No, but the situation we're talking about here is there is no quorum. There's, you know, Conservation is supposed to meet, our quorum is five, there are four of us there. They're saying that they are, that's how they have their meetings, they go subquorum so they don't have to go through all the nonsense and then they have their meetings. So they're functioning as a subcommittee, but they're not officially a subcommittee.
I think, and again, I'm not the attorney, so I'm trying to be careful here. I think what would happen there is that meeting didn't happen. The fact that then coincidentally, that subcommittee happened to meet right after the meeting didn't happen, I suppose is fine, but you're not going to generate minutes or any of that stuff from that meeting that didn't happen. Yeah, I think the question, the subtlety you're trying to get at, if you have a notice meeting and then you don't have a quorum, technically that meeting then never gets studied. It just didn't happen.
Still determined as a majority, as.
We can't hear what's going on in the room, thank you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we could not hear George's, everything George said.
I was just looking for a clarification that the advice we were given is that a quorum is only formed as a majority of the number stated in the charter, not the number of actual appointed members. Is that so correct? That is not correct.
Because this is a committee, committee, since this is a big group discussion, I think it's going to just, this is going to be a hard meeting for people here.
Craig, can you talk into the mic, please?
Yeah, so what I'm saying is because of the nature of this meeting, because it's a group sitting around, it's going to be difficult for the people that are on Zoom to hear all the conversations. And I apologize for that. I think that's just the way it's going to be for tonight. You're welcome to come down to the schoolhouse if you want. We'll try to do the best we can, but I think there's going to be a lot of in and out for this conversation.
So, so your quorum is determined by how many committee members you have. So if your charter says seven and you have five members, your quorum is three. And I would like to say that, let's say you, you have five members and only two show up. They can't decide that they're a subcommittee unless there really are members of a subcommittee. So in other words, they can't just decide that that night that they're members of a subcommittee. They had to have established that.
Yeah, so you're right, so the, the quorum definition helps, it's a majority of filled seats. If that helps. But, but again, two people can meet and they can talk. Yeah, they're just, they're not an official subcommittee and they're, and they're not, obviously not the meeting itself.
Something Cara told us, because we're, we're kind of Brown Act specialists. We always have Brown Act buddies on my committee, so we have five members. Now, EPC is a much bigger committee, so you probably don't have to worry about it. But with five members, we have to make sure that no three of us are ever talking about the same thing. Yeah, so we have Brown Act buddies, so I have somebody that I only talk to about finance and insurance and I will never talk to anyone else on the committee. And so it's a good policy just to have, if you're a Brown Act Committee, to have a Brown Act buddy and that's who you talk to about a given subject. And also something we encountered is we had residents, they would send me an email and then they would, I would respond and then they would send my email to another committee member. And we risked having a Brown Act violation. So now I ask residents to send emails through our committee email because you can have an accidental Brown Act violation if two members are copied on an email and then they forward it to a third because three people are a quorum, yeah. Exactly. Right, right. So now when they send me an email, I'll send it to the member of the committee, I want to answer that. But, you know, you want to be helpful and you start to answer.
Well, in theory, we're going around here, so pass that around and.
So, am I picking up, I am now. The Open Space Committee is inclined to stay Brown Act compliant for reasons that maybe especially have to do with open space in our town right now, wanting to be maximally accessible and transparent. And as we spoke as a committee, there was maybe the most interest, I'm sorry, I'm not doing this very well, in the minutes and whether the kinds of minutes we're doing are required by the Brown Act or if we can be Brown Act compliant and be doing minutes a little bit differently. So that was one of the things we were curious about. It's like, do they need to look like they do or could those minutes be still Brown Act compliant and maybe not quite as they are? So that's, that's where we stand on open space at this point.
So can I ask a clarifying question? When you say the minutes, you're speaking to what we call action minutes? And if you had your choice, you would like more verbose minutes? Is that, I'm just trying to understand what the different variations might be.
I think that in the minutes, being more narrative maybe than, than action minutes as we've been producing them. And there seemed to be uncertainty on our part about whether or not we were required to do them as we were and be Brown Act compliant, so that's my sort of small question.
So my understanding was that the, to be Brown Act compliant, you have to, that the agenda action is the minimum requirement. And so that's what the council does now with very, with no narrative, but that we can expand from that, if we expand on it, include narrative, doesn't make us not Brown Eye compliant. There's, there's a threshold you have to meet, not a, not a threshold you have to stay under.
Yeah, I mean, that's my understanding as well, again, I'm not the attorney. I, I know that there are some advice where you keep them just to the minimum facts you need. That way, you're not creating record that then somebody says, oh, but you said over here, or you miss, you know. Because one of the problems with like the verbatim minutes, when they're being transcribed, is often there are errors. And then if you're approving them and you get into that whole thing, so. But, but we could talk to an attorney and my guess is we may even within the Brown Act committees find a way to say, all right, you know, maybe there's a way we can create two styles of, of minutes. I mean, so, but it's a good question, so let's, we'll follow up.
To do the Breckin Act and add a little bit more narrative, just to help us remember what happened. Shen would like to stay as a Brown Act Committee. We feel like our role is in approving tree permits and, and engaging, supporting the ASCC means that we really need to be Brown Act compliant. The schoolhouse is on mute right now. It's on mute. The schoolhouse is on mute.
Can you hear Nan?
Now I can hear.
Rita, can you hear me?
Yeah. Now I can hear. Thank you.
Okay, I was just saying that Geological Safety Committee definitely wants to stay a Brown Act Committee and will be much more comfortable with seven members. It gives us more wiggle room to, to, to discuss things with three people, three-person subcommittee. So my understanding is that if we want, we can always get two people together on an ad hoc basis. But if we want three, it needs to be a sub. But if we want three, it needs to be a subcommittee established by.
And have a meeting of a subcommittee. You can chat about various things, but you can't have a meeting. No, you can't have a meeting of the committee. We, we established that. But you can't have a meeting of a subcommittee either because you're not a subcommittee.
Right, but the subcommittee has to be established by the full.
By the full committee.
And that's, if it's three people, then.
It's two or three. Three usually works better, as you say.
But two people can informally get together to discuss, as long as it's not a chain discussion involving other people.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe I, one, either hand, hand you the mic or I'll just give it, okay. So, so generally, subcommittees are formed by the full committee to go look into a specific issue. Rather than just, you know, we're gonna get together and discuss something. And then you sort of expect that they're gonna come back and report to the full body. And so that's the kind of primary difference, whereas if you're just getting together to brainstorm and do some stuff and then when you get to your next meeting, you go, hey, we happened to meet and brainstormed some stuff. But it wasn't a request by the full committee to go look into something. That's usually the main use of a subcommittee.
Okay. And then the question of minutes. Our minutes have my geologists and we tend to be very detail oriented. And sometimes they come out looking like transcriptions. So that's not necessary. It takes a huge amount of time, someone's time to do that, to go through the recording of the meeting and pull out everything everyone said. So the understand, my understanding is the minimum the Brown Act requires is basically action items on agenda items, right? Voted yes, voted no.
Just look at the council minutes and you'll see, you know, this happened, this happened, this happened, this. It doesn't say what happened, how it happened, who said, up or down. And then when they vote, it says what they did. So if you take an action, then you have to record your vote.
Right.
You don't have to record your discussions.
So, but sometimes it's really useful to record the discussion that ensues. Okay. So then that's, then how much of it is reasonable to, to record in the minute? So, I mean, if this, this group decides on a style of minutes or a particular style, type of committee, are we restrained, constrained to, to the minimum?
But once again, the Brown, Brown Act thing is the minimum. You can, your committee can do, you know, any variety as, as long as you have the minimum. You can't ignore the minimum. There is no maximum.
Right, there is, okay. So, so we're not trying to establish a maximum. Okay.
So, and let, let me just amend that. I mean, I, I think we need to talk to our attorney and find out, you know, what style of the minutes are acceptable. Because my understanding is we moved to these action minutes because the lawyer suggested that they were more protective for the town. So I, I think we need to come up with an answer. And it may be for committees that we say, you know, having more descriptive minutes is fine. But I, before we decide that it's okay, I've just put it down. This is one of the open questions is what style of minutes can we allow both for Brown Act and non-Brown Act committees?
Yeah, so I think, I think that was, that advice was given to the council and the commissions. And I'm not sure it's necess, I mean, once again, the lawyer will have to decide. But you can hear this as one of the sticking points for the committees.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. And that's what I'm saying. So I wrote down that that's the question we need to get an answer to.
I'm Jim Lippman on the Historical Resources Committee. Nancy Lund is the chairperson and she regrets she can't be here. We do not advise town government on anything. We collect information. We are not the official archive for town government documents. We simply are trying to get all of our collection. I don't know how many physical items we have. We have well over 10,000 digital items. We hope to put those online at some point for the public to access. But we find the Brown Act to be very awkward. We like to get our committee members together. We do meet every Thursday. Once a year, we do have an official meeting where we take official action to approve our request for the next year's budget. And that's about it for what our committee does officially. So again, we would very much like to be free of the Brown Act. I personally feel that we should very definitely comply with the Brown Act while we're subject to it. And as I say, that's rather inconvenient. So, thank you.
So, clarifying question. When you guys meet, do you have an agenda? Right, so you might consider being this third option that we had, which we called a group? Okay, okay.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Okay.
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Kristy, you have a question? I'm not sure they deal with historical sites. I think they're historical resources. I think they're memorabilia of the town. The, the council does the other. So that's, your, your committee currently doesn't do that, so it's not really relevant. That's fine. Let's move on to Jerry.
Okay, I'm Jerry Scheffron and I'm representing the Emergency Preparedness Committee. We discussed this and in a sense, there was agreement that we would rather not be a Brown Act committee. But as I analyzed it, it was primarily the ability to attend a meeting and vote on Zoom. We all got very lazy. We have an eight o'clock Thursday morning meeting, which in the middle of winter is not always exciting. And it was pretty nice to just log on and be at a meeting. So I think the general sense of the committee was they just didn't want to be burdened with having to show up if they were out of town, had something else going on. I'm not sure all of the other issues regarding not being a non-Brown Act committee were as clear as maybe they should be for some, for a committee that deals with emergency preparedness. It wasn't that the committee was against transparency in any way. Wasn't that the committee was against advanced agendas in any way. So, in fact, the only other thing that I sort of sensed was it's so difficult to get anyone to take minutes that, you know, if there was some way that you didn't have to do that, they would have loved that too. But I'm hearing something a little new tonight, and that is it can be strictly action, record the meeting and let people go dig into it as much as they want to because everything is already there. So I, it, it basically comes down to the convenience of the Zoom and versus being directly responsible to the council and following all the other aspects of the Brown Act. I, I live under the Brown Act and on other boards, so I am really used to it. Other people, especially when they come on a committee, they find it odd or curious, or why do we have to do that? I don't personally think it's that hard to live with and it works very well.
So wildfire preparedness committee, my memo is attached to the handout. We, we felt pretty strongly we should remain a Brown Act committee. And I wanna say we received quite a bit of education and training on the Brown Act. And, and I actually have a document just on how to write an agenda and title every item on the agenda. So it can be done and it's actually not as confusing as it sounds. And so the big thing I wanna stress is we felt that for committees that aren't Brown Act, there should be as much flexibility as possible. And I was actually thinking about this yesterday. And I think that as we create the handbook, a lot of this information about the type of minutes that, that might be. So, so for example, for Brown Act minutes, we were told that because we are recording our meetings, the action items are fine for minutes. But if we weren't recording our meetings, we would have to write more robust minutes. And that would be something, let's say we check with the attorney and that's true, would be in the handbook. And the same could be true for the non-Brown Act committees. When we go to write that handbook, we might be able to give them two or three examples of minutes. And it might depend on your committee. Parks and Rec, they have a budget. It's probably pretty important that they document what their decision are. But your committee, it, it's probably not as important to document as thoroughly. So I think that the handbook is actually going to answer a lot of these questions pretty clearly. And we would stress, give these committees flexibility. Don't make them meet in person. Don't make them meet. Give them some flexibility to, to enjoy themselves.
You bring up an interesting point. Excuse me, may I speak? I just wanted to make a straw poll of all the committee chairs here. Since we're all actually Brown Act committees at the present time. Who has received clear guidance on writing agendas and negotiation of the Brown Act in the, in recent couple of years? That would be the one I missed. Sorry.
Was, I think there was a separate email that, that went out that described how you have to write the agenda items to be specific.
Okay, can you hear me? Can I hear me? So our committee is a little different. All of you, I think, are on committees that affect the whole town, whereas ours is, and it's very recent that we've been a town committee, is just to do with paving and drains and so forth in a specific neighborhood. So, but like many of you, I think we have founded the Brown Act, now that we're a formal committee, has been, you might see a pain in the neck, but obviously the, the theory behind the Brown Act is fairness and openness to the whole community. So the intent is good, sometimes using it as a pain in the neck. But we have been operating that way. Our president, Theresa Godfrey, has been great about that sort of thing. And so I'm just stepping in and may not have all the information. And we had a so-called road committee for decades and decades. And it was early on just so casual that John Boyce just went out and did things. And it worked pretty well. Of course, now we're talking about more money and all of those responsibilities that go with it. So we have made a point of being really careful, I think, about quorums. And certainly the idea of suddenly declaring yourself a subcommittee on the spot, we would never dream of. We have a couple of subcommittees at the moment. We have a paving subcommittee of three. Our quorum is four. And we have a drains committee of three, which is very exciting to, to look into drains and dig them out if they're kind of clogged up, you know? So I guess I would say, oh, a question I threw out several minutes ago bluntly without being invited was, I don't know what year the Brown Act was formed, but the sort of example of the extremes would be, for example, as you said, if somebody's ill. And we had a case like that, I think, our last meeting and would like to zoom in from home. But, but to do that, he would have had to, you know, put a sign on his door 72 hours in advance and all this. And he would have to be ADU compliant, which I don't think any of us are with our crazy driveways and all that. So it seemed absurd, but that's just the way it is to make it work in, in the big picture and philosophically. So, for example, we have, three of us are going to go look at a clogged, broken drain in a few days. We won't make any decisions about it. We'll look at it. We'll look at the three bids we've obtained. And then we will go back and have a discussion in our formal meeting, hopefully with a whole quorum there or we won't have a meeting. So that's sort of the level where we're working on. It's not anything grand. It's not colorful. It's not romantic. It's just ditches and drains and concrete, asphalt and stuff like that. So we're, we're trying to deal with it. We don't necessarily like dealing with the Brown Act, but we know the philosophy behind it, which is meant to be good for everyone.
It's finishing the circle.
So.
It should be on.
I'll try it again. It sounds like it's here. Okay, good. Committee, grounding. So it used to be much more important when we had a cable TV franchise because we had to, actually had to work together with PCI and ACT and Comcast. And when it became a state franchise, we really focused our agenda down much more on the question of undergrounding, which has happened periodically. But we, we have, we've actually become a meeting, a group that meets intermittently as, as issues come up or opportunities come up. So for us, for example, descriptive, descriptive minutes are actually really important because the last meeting might have been two or three years ago. And so it's actually very important. And also we tend to do a lot of documentation, what's going on and trying to keep up with changing PG regulations, which is entertaining. I'll leave it at that. You're right, the Brown Act does date back to 1953. So it's, it's out of date. Now, there's a question. 2022, where there was a handout like this that had everything, it looked like that had a link to some training as well. So, you know, I think, I think everyone has that, accessibility committees, town members, everybody can, can see those. And Kristy, I'd be happy for it over if you need a copy of it, if you haven't seen it. But yeah, that, that was actually really helpful to explain kind of what goes into an agenda, what makes a quorum. One can, who can talk, what, what can they talk about, what they can do. This is, because we meet, because we meet intermittently, we haven't found it onerous because I think we haven't really yet in, in two years. But we actually think that the public input side is actually very important because if we do make a decision on undergrounding, it'll be a, you know, million to $5 million project, which is, again, it's all advice going back to the council. But we'll actually wanna have, you know, public input on that and really, really drive that. So that's my section.
Are you guys state Brown Act?
Kristy, Kristy, this isn't just an open back and forth here with Chris, sorry.
So, and that's your question, probably not, because there's not been an undergrounding issue around that. There's not been a question about the sex section funds that can. Ours deals more like, how do you start to underground the corridors? I actually anticipate coming up.
My name is Lucy Neely and I'm the chair of the Race and Equity Committee. We discussed this in our April meeting and there was some diversity of opinion, discussion of pros and cons. The main pro being that people could attend virtually and just all the convenience that that offers. I think for people on the committee feeling like they would like to be able to travel but not miss meetings, have more flexibility with their families but not miss meetings, be sick, not miss meetings. And and then the con of becoming a non-Brown Act committee mainly being perceived as like a credibility or integrity possibly jeopardizing in some way. But then we missed our main meeting because we weren't able to make quorum. And if people had been able to attend virtually, we probably would have been able to make quorum. And I think just from in a personal opinion, since we haven't had a meeting since then, I think that would push me towards leaning towards the part of our discussion of favoring becoming a non-Brown Act committee, just the main pro being because of the flexibility of being able to have members attend for quorum virtually. And then I I think the thing that would help our committee feel, you know, if that's the decision we made, because like I said, we didn't have a follow-up discussion. If that was the decision that we wanted to become a non-Brown Act committee, mostly because of that virtual flexibility, the thing that would feel important, which I think is in the works, is for, you know, the committee handbook and just these sort of revised structure and criteria to still give the non-Brown Act committees a sense of structure to to have that confidence and integrity. And then the credibility with the rest of the community and town government. So, yeah, we didn't quite decide, but that's where we're at.
So there are a couple of other things that haven't come out. One of the concerns, Lucy finally mentioned the end, is people have talked about being concerned there would be second-class committees. And somehow that, you know, it would have to be set up so there wasn't that, we're the real committees and we're the kind of next in line committees, A-type, H-type. And certainly when you get down to the group, you know, it needs a better name than group to just so they have a sense that they are important in their in their own way. I had heard elsewhere express some concern that the, if if everyone was appointed by and serving at the pleasure of a subcommittee of two people of the council, that it was getting, that it might be too narrowly in terms of broad, broad representation from the town, broad control of the council, et cetera. I think that that concern sounded a little overwrought to me, but I just wanted to put it on the floor to see if other people, if that came up in your committees or you were concerned about that at all. I don't see it as, I don't, myself don't see it as a problem.
The subcommittee just appoints the membership. Everything else after that, you know, liaisons are, would still work the same way they currently do, where, you know, liaison roles are shared across all council members. Pretty much the only thing that would change is the assignment of the membership. So just to clarify.
Can I ask a question? Yes. Is anybody here from nature and science? I was just trying to fill out my little table here because nature and science and I, did anybody from trails speak and did I miss it? Okay, so those are the two we're just missing. Yeah, public, but Public Works, I got their input, so I got that, so thank you. Not yet, I just got it from Howard tonight. So it's in my little handwritten thing. Excuse me? Parks and Rec, yeah. Non-Brown Act, yeah. On the first, non-Brown Act. Non-Brown Act.
So is this in your handout? Did you have that page in the handout here? So you can see which, who's done what? But once again, I think these won't be final until we really work out the details of what it means. And then people may well choose, those who can shift, will shift. Right, we did. So Nan has the microphone now and then we'll pass it to.
Thank you. So this is going back to the committees.
The question of liability, insurance, liability for the committees, so will none.
Right, and I think that we were putting it on the list of questions to get answered. Again, I'm not an attorney, I don't see any reason why they wouldn't be. They're still basically being, you know, effectively put in place by the town. Absolutely, yeah. And along with the style of the agenda, I mean, all these things, the attorney will review all of this to make sure. I mean, we started the process by just seeing if the attorney thought that having members appointed by a subcommittee would work. And it was the attorney's opinion that it would. But then, yeah, there's lots of other details that we're going to sort out. And that's the reason we're having these discussions, as Sarah's saying, is it's, it'll be many months to sort of sort this out. And we're trying to make sure that we don't create any unintended consequences. And liability would certainly be a large unintended consequence. So, yeah, absolutely.
Sarah, the people at home have.
To answer your question about attorney's involvement, we started with Cara when, before we even began this process to vet out if this was even a viable approach. We've consulted them along the way. We have a new town attorney. We talked to her the other day, we're meeting with her again in a couple of days. And certainly when we go to development of the handbook, she's going to play a very large role. So just to say, throughout the entire process, we've been getting legal advice. And Craig's taking all these notes on these legal questions. And that's part of our agenda on Thursday when we meet with her.
Thanks, you want to pass that to Jennifer?
Are you, do you want volunteer help, you know, review it? Because if you do, I I do have some handbook experience, but because I think that's going to solve a lot of problems as that handbook starts to get created.
It'll, it'll evolve out of this in some form.
Jerry? Can I just clarify how the decision is going to be made? So, I mean, you've heard now a lot of opinions, this committee thinks they want to be this, this committee wants to be that. The council, I assume, is going to decide whether you actually get to be what you want to be or you don't get to be what you want to be. Is that a fair statement? And if so, I just worry about creating some expectations and having the rug pulled off, mind you.
So I think number one, I'm glad you brought up the council because Craig and I haven't even had the opportunity to review this yet with the council. So you guys are all frankly ahead of where they are. So the council created the subcommittee for Craig and I to be working on this together. And we said, okay, we're going to go away for, you know, three, four, five, six months and work on this. We're on the agenda, hopefully, for June 14th to give the council an update. That's a huge loaded agenda right now, so there is a chance that this this item might get pushed a month. But the next step is to go back to them and update them on what this process has been. And then the intent all along from the outset, from Craig and I, is we want committees to be self-selecting. So unless there's a situation like with BPTS where there's a reason legally because of a code overlap that they have to be Brown Act, our goal was that it would be self-selecting. And I don't want to speak for our other council members, but I can't imagine they're going to disagree. Like, they want this to be, you know, self-driven.
Yeah, I think unless you get legal advice, that a committee has to be Brown Act for some reason. I think we're going to let the committees decide.
Chris is, how does he handle?
So one of, one of our actually concerns on the Brown Act question from the conversations, not official meetings, what, once again, making sure we're still friendly to getting new people onto committees that didn't become this cliff someone had to jump over. Because I think that's, that's something we all face, is it's a real important charge for our town is getting new people joining committees, whether they're, you know, adults or I think there's, there's space to add some, some of the high school students to it as well. The second one was on the agenda side. While the agendas are important, because the town actually added another requirement of having them ready for proceeding Wednesday, we, we, for example, typically met on Thursdays. So it wasn't a 72-hour Brown Act notice, it was 175-hour Brown Act notice because of the process. And symbolizing that would be, would be actually important for the committees that do stay Brown Act. Because this notion of being sent to the town on the preceding Wednesday just just meant that you realize you actually, again, it was making your next agenda.
It happened primarily for bureaucratic reasons. And also, they got very strict about the loop of it, had to, you know, you send the agenda in, it has to go to the town manager, it has to go to your liaison, it has to go to the clerk.
So that's, that's.
That's tight oversight. We're loosened a little bit.
It's a problem we should solve because it, because it's actually harmful to the, to the ones that are trying to run activities.
I totally understand, I feel your pain about how early things need to be in. We have that on the council as well. So basically, when we have agenda items and work that we're doing, we need to have, you know, the packet documentation ready a week in advance so that it gives them, there's all these cascading elements of work that go on within the staff. And so well, I think what happens with staff, just to represent their point of view because they're not in the meeting, is that especially with 17 committees and the amount of variability that goes on, they have, they've kind of created this lead time and order for their workflow. And they, even with that length of time they have, really struggle with keeping up with this number of committees and the amount of process that is required, unfortunately.
It just, the feedback could be if there's a way to actually, in the committee instructions, give really clear guidance on how to do things, then it doesn't have to go through levels of bureaucracy that are frankly not town values.
So I did, I wrote that down as a process question.
Okay, was there something else you wanted to say?
The geologic safety committee ideally would sit around a dining room table where we could all look at maps. If we want an additional map, we'd go get one. So we can't do that, that's just too difficult to have the public be involved. So we meet here. And I'm impressed with the meeting this, this evening where we're all sitting around like this. And this is at least somewhat like what we need. But we sit around the table over there, we find that the, the facilities that are available to us are very poor. We can't hear each other very well. We can't, if we, we prepare enough, we can have maps on the screen. But it's just all very awkward. We, we survive okay and we have people come in from the public and engage with us and that's nice. But Brown Act just makes it difficult, that's all. But I I am impressed at this, having the table, the chairs.
We switched it off or the battery died?
Test. Well, I made my say, I think that maybe the town could help us a little more and we could have better meetings and help be with the public better if if we somehow had this kind of facility available and helpful to us. But we never seem to have the right, right opportunities.
Yeah, I don't think you're precluded, you're not precluded from doing this in your meetings.
Well, I think the, the issue, and I put it down as one of the questions I was hoping to ask for tonight, is, you know, Zoom is one of the things that has both been a sort of a blessing and a bane to us. Because I think the great thing is it lets, you know, the public participate in a way that we never had before. And that, that part's been great. But you've seen the difficulty, I mean, Kristy had to come down here in person because we don't have 17 mics to hand out to everybody. One thing that we talked about, so we even on the council, you know, unless I've learned to talk like with this thing practically in my mouth. But if we don't, you know, if I'm, if I'm over here, all of a sudden, you can't hear what I'm saying. We've talked about maybe getting some lapel mics, maybe some other tech might be another way to do that. But the question I also wanted to ask is where are people at are in terms of having your meeting on Zoom? I've heard some people say they don't like the fact they're recorded. You know, that they get put up on the public website. So that's something that committees, I think, ultimately need to think about, the sort of the public aspect of it versus coming down here and being part of it versus international public.
Could you be recorded without being on Zoom?
Well, and I think those are the questions that I was hoping we could discuss a little bit is, you know, first of all, do we record it at all versus Zoom without recording? That would be one option. We could also record it but not have it be, you know, not have the video part of it. So there might be different ways that we could approach this. The other limitation is, we're kind of in the situation where if this room is not available, and it's booked by a committee, another committee can't have a meeting at the same time if we want to use this facility. And we don't have another Zoom facility. So I'd be interested at some point to hear people's thoughts on the use of Zoom versus the restrictions of Zoom. And, you know, how could we sort of get the maximum benefit without basically encumbering the committees too much? Because again, the whole goal of this exercise was how do we make it easier for people to volunteer?
And can I ask a clarifying question? Someone had some along the way somewhere, I'm not sure it's true, that now that we're out of the pandemic regulations, that the council and the commissions had to do Zoom, but that the commit, for the committees, it was optional. Is that true if we're Brown Act committees? Is it in fact optional to have Zoom?
So legally, it's not required for any of the public bodies to do Zoom, including the council and the commission. So that's the legal answer. The current policy, as far as I know, is that we all do Zoom, including the committees. I don't think we've made a policy decision on committees not doing Zoom. And, and I think we should.
So we could, while our laborious process goes on here, that's going to take months and months, especially if you include rewriting the handbook. Could a few committees get together and ask the council to free us of that obligation? Because that would be, that would be an enormous thing. And the, the sort of push to not be a Zoom, be a Brown Committee might have a lot less oomph if we simply had the option not to have to, have to be remote.
Sure. Well, I, I think the thing I would recommend is let's get it on an agenda. I think the public should be able to weigh in.
So maybe we can do a quick little round here and see what people think of that. And the, and then it could come, if most of us agree, it could come from the committee of committees. So. My, the question was, can a committee opt to meet in person and not have Zoom available? The, the public is welcome to join you as they always have been, but you're not required to do this technological hoop de hoop that, that makes the meeting so difficult. Right, just like the good old days, as they say.
So what about this ADU accessibility question?
Don't have, if you're not on Zoom, it's, it's a non-issue.
Oh, okay, good.
Well, just to be clear, you would still have to meet in a place that's ADA compliant.
Here in Chicago, you're not, you're not at the meeting, just like 2019.
I think what Jean's asking is if you didn't meet in the schoolhouse and say, like the Woodside High School, road maintenance district would ideally like to meet in somebody's living room, which they could potentially notice, but that's, I think, the question, but it would still have to be ADA.
So the real, the big question to me is the ADU thing where my understanding is if you, I'm sorry, excuse me, oops, too many of those, what are the acronyms or whatever they're called? If you choose not to be having people access by Zoom, they don't have to come. If they're in Chicago at a meeting, of course, but we've never, we have meetings in houses that are not ADA compliant. You can't get a wheelchair in there, you don't have a bathroom big enough for a wheelchair. Where does this stuff come in with meetings?
That's a separate question. That goes back to are you Brown Act or non-Brown Act?
So Brown Act.
Brown Act, I believe you have to be accessible.
Okay, so if you figure you can never have that.
A different question from the Zoom question that we're.
Exactly, but if you, if you don't, you know, if you want to have meetings in homes and then none of these homes are ADA compliant, then you can't do, have a meeting there if it's a Brown Act committee. Okay, gotcha.
Correct. So, so I want to pull us back unless you want to say something different.
I want to say something about Zoom. So first of all. I know the state legislature is actually discussing even allowing hybrid meetings. So the whole issue of having a public Brown Act meeting on Zoom may or may not go away. That's what.
Mandating, they're talking about should they mandate them?
Well, Melissa told me before she left that it, that they, they might stop the whole policy. It's the town.
Saying you may not.
May not be on Zoom. So who knows what the state will, will do. But so right, right now, any, any of our committees could meet in the community hall. And any of us could not, well, I, I didn't know.
I don't think that not if there's a town policy that we will, that we will.
But, but if we did and we didn't have Zoom, then we couldn't do action item minutes. I think then you would be obligated to document more. And I know that our secretary MJ spent a lot of time with Melissa about what kind of minutes we had to write. And the fact that we are on Zoom allowed us to just do the action items. And then also my committee loves the Zoom because we get people asking questions and we really, really love the public asking questions. And if they have to show up in person, they won't, you know, they just won't come. And also we, for example, we had Stanford, we had Mid Penn, they gave presentations. We want the public to be able to check the recording and watch those presentations.
I don't think we're suggesting that town councils say we may not do hybrid meetings. I think we're suggesting that for those committees that aren't dealing with things as important and weighty as yours is.
Yeah.
That we have the option of not, of not choosing to have hybrid meetings. For some committees, that makes overwhelmingly good sense. So I would think, so my, my proposal, if you want to call it that formally, is that this, while we have us all together, might we consider as an act of generosity to those committees to, to, to have the committee of committees request to the council that they have a policy that for committees, it be optional to have their meetings be hybrid. That they, that they, and, and you may want to put restrictions on it, you may do with it what you want. But I think it's a, it's a, it's a big step towards getting us towards the more simplicity that we're looking for without going all the way to saying we're not Brown Act. Because I, I happen to think that the issue of transparency remains incredibly important. And on the, the thing, one of the questions that, that WPC had was can we still advise the council if we're non-transparent? And I don't think anybody's, I don't see any way the handbook should be written to have some committees be not transparent. That's not on the, in the future as far as I can see.
A staff time too, if not everyone, you assume, because it takes up a lot of their time to do that.
And all kinds of things. So, so hang on one, one second.
Yeah, I'm going to get there, but Rita has her hand up. Yeah, I was going to ask. So I wrote down finding out whether recorded meetings and action minutes are related because I'm not sure that's legally the case, but, but we'll check. And then the other I heard was clarifying our policy on Zoom for the committees.
Right, and I thought that rather, that maybe rather than going on your long list, that it's going to the, it's going to the lawyer and then that, that we might request from this committee that, that option be.
Right, which somehow, somehow it needs to be clarified, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as the public can see, I mean, if we're going to make it a Zoom meeting, I would say as long as the public could see everybody in the meeting.
But we don't have Zoom facilities elsewhere.
Yeah, we don't have the facility.
Do we do it on FaceTime? Could you do it on another platform where it's easier? Yeah.
Well, wait, 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 hang on, but before we lose this thread, so I did want to unmute Rita. She's had her hand up. I just wanted to make sure I captured everybody's issues. So I'm going to unmute, or I'm going to ask Rita to unmute.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking my comment. And I just want to say, when I came to this town, you know, the average age in this town, I bought my property in 2009 was, let's just say it was over 50. And a lot of those people, they don't want to leave their house. They can't leave their house and drive themselves after 7:00 PM. And for the, all the young families that have moved into this town, over 800 properties have turned over or have been built since I came, bought my property, there's a lot of young kids. And so, you know, this would be the time, depending on if there's, you know, two parents in the house or one parent in the house. And so I, I don't think you want a, a classroom full of, you know, sleepy kids or, it, it's really convenient to have the Zoom for older residents and for the, the families, the young families in our town, or some of the families that have teenagers at home. They don't want to leave the house, definitely don't want to leave their house. But the, and I just want to say for the GEO committee, there's been a couple of meetings, these Monday morning meetings, that the system is just not working. And we've gone to the town center and tried to get help so that it can be on Zoom. There are people that are trying to connect and people that are calling each other. It's like, hey, is it, is it really going on? And there's no one at the town center to help. And so I'm sure it puts the extra burden on them to have to do more thorough minutes, unlike the other groups that, that do have the support. You know, something simple as a mouse on that computer that's on the dais, it was gone and they just can't connect. And so, you know, moving forward, please continue with Zoom or some other platform so that more residents can have the opportunity to participate. And then the ones that can't participate, at least they get to see the recording and, and actually see where tax dollars and the decisions are being made. Because you can't really follow it with the skeleton minutes. And not many people have the four hours to, to look, but they can jump around in the, in the minutes to hopefully figure out what went on. But thank you and please support the, the GEO group. You know, they do lots of important work, but on Monday morning, there's no one to help. And people have tried. And I'm sure that some of the other committees that are in the, in the room right now also are without that type of support. And if nothing else, they need a key to that little room to reset the system. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita. Okay, so can we pull back to, yeah, focusing on the, on the Zoom issue or not? We were, we were trying to just see what, what various people in various committees think about that. Let's see, did we lose our second? Where's our second?
So I have the microphone. Can I just make my comment and then I'll be happy to pass it on? You know, I think the Zoom game is sort of out of the bag. Going backwards is going to be virtually impossible. I think it has increased the ability for the community to participate in its government and for a committee to decide either one, that it's not that important or that there might not be anyone in the town who is interested in what they're doing is wrong. I, I just don't think we can go back there.
Chris, let's, let, we're going to go around the room, Christie, and then let you speak.
Oh, yes, I agree with Jerry, absolutely. I think the. tool for meetings and it's, you know, yes, it's convenient, but it provides another level of transparency. You know, sometimes, sometimes at town council meetings, you know, as you say, Craig, if you're not speaking directly into the microphone, I can't tell what's being said. I can't see the people because you're not directly on camera and it's a little difficult. But Zoom does help, definitely helps. And I will, you know, thank you Rita for mentioning the problems we've had with Zoom. We probably have the first meeting Monday morning, yeah, we do. When we, we meet Monday mornings at 10:00 typically. And I think for half the meetings this year of the Zoom system has not been working. We would like to record things on Zoom. We'd like to be able to review the recordings and we'd like other people to, to have access. And it's not working. And as Rita said, they have to have the key to the server, be able to reboot the system.
So maybe all the chairs should now, in, in addition to having a key to the door, they should have a key to the, that little room so that they can be a little more self-sufficient. So it raises the other issue, and that is if it's mandatory that we are Zoom accessible, if you can't get the Zoom tech to work, can you have a meeting? Yes, you can, okay.
And then you guys are going around, one other question I'd ask is the other possibility is you could have Zoom in the sense that people could watch the proceedings like, you know, cable TV, but not participate. That would be the other way, that might be another step where people could basically watch the, the meetings and how things were going.
A webinar.
Sort of a webinar, right. And then, you know, then you send your questions in as, as written comments.
Well, can't a committee meeting participate on Zoom remotely, but not as a member of the committee, just as a member of the public?
Again, I'm just saying as you go around, that's what you might want to think about the, the different ways that you could organize a committee.
From conservation's point of view, I think we'll keep doing Zoom. It's been great to get additional input from the public. But in addition to that, of course, does it have to be? In, in addition to that, we've been able to have Don Bullard participate in our meetings, the past two meetings, which would have been impossible since it's at the same time as his board, his board meeting. So it was really nice to have that option, to have people who are really busy, but we need their input. So that's another thing.
I appreciate you raising this. I think it's an important conversation to have. I think there are real privacy concerns with us being on YouTube for the entire world to watch and scrape as opposed to what the traditional role of the committee would be, which would be within the community. So I think it's an important conversation to have about whether we need to be on Zoom, which committees need to be on Zoom, and also whether we want to be posting on YouTube recordings or, you know, what the appropriate use of those recordings are. Maybe those recordings stay with the town, maybe they're used for transcripts. I'm very uncomfortable with this idea that we just broadcast it wholesale as well. So that's, that's my feedback.
I joined the Finance and Audit Committee in 1995. And until the pandemic hit, the median number of guests at our committee meetings was zero. The maximum number of members of the public we ever had was two, with one being the, the unusual occurrence where somebody would show up. I, I think it's been certainly complicated technically and hopefully we'll continue to work this out now that we've added Zoom. But it's remarkable how much more public interest and attention and comment and question engagement that's facilitated. It's just game changing. I, I welcome the extra time required to take comments from the 20 or even 30 people now who routinely attend Finance and Audit Committee meetings. So I think we should find a way to continue to make this work. By the way, when it comes to minutes, we may also want to consider the new note-taking plugins that are available for Zoom that will automatically produce a transcript and even an AI summary that could potentially go across, go alongside the action minutes that you may do to be legally compliant. But that way, people don't have to sit through a three-hour meeting to find what somebody said. You could actually read the search for terms in a transcript or in the AI summary. And yes, AI can make errors, but as long as you have the underlying recording, you can sort it all out. On balance, I think that would be good.
I think it's on the list, non-Brown Act. Finance is non-Brown.
We just, we just said it.
We're saying now.
It's not non-Brown Act for Finance and Audit. That's our recommendation.
Thank you. Zoom, yes. Technology overall, I think there are two very important points already brought up. Beg your pardon, I forget your name. On the subject of Zoom, it did more than anything to invigorate public participation in our meetings. And I think it was a very great step forward. In fact, the pandemic era meetings for BPTS were the best, best participated and the, the most sort of fluent. And once we learned to manage the, the new hybrid, well, online format, actually things worked very well. Contrast that with keeping our recordings and putting them out there in the public forum as they are on YouTube. I was horridly surprised while searching for some Friday night entertainment on YouTube once to find my meeting being one of my suggestions. Didn't like that, but I do see the value of keeping those recordings for townsfolk, residents and on the, on the, posted locally as, as a record. That's my comment. Thank you.
Well, the, you want to speak, Chris, before you go? Okay, thank you. And then, so let's make these super brief. We're talking Zoom only and many points have already been made because there's a little agenda here where we're going to brainstorm about a few other things and I'd like us to get to those things.
I'm befuddled here as to what exactly I'm supposed to talk about. No, I think.
Don't have to say anything.
Okay, Zoom, Zoom is, is here to stay and we've got to use it.
The, if you go to the, in your packet, sorry, Christie, yes. This committee of two. So members. The, it's. It hasn't been exactly determined yet, but it's the subcommittee, the council that would appoint. And the, the process would be much like it is now in that the committees bring the names and the subcommittee, you know, works with that. Anyway, so, so a gen, of the ones that are on here, which are the ones that you would like us most to speak to? Since we won't get to all of them, agenda, noticing, forum, minutes. First of all, let me just summarize what I think I heard. I mean, you took more detailed notes, but I think I heard that for many of us, the Zoom thing is like. I mean, you took more detailed notes, but I think I heard that for many of us, the Zoom thing is like one of the desirable things to make the meetings more efficient, less crazed technologically, et cetera, was to be able to drop Zoom. And yet, as we go around the room, it seems like everybody thinks we should have Zoom. It's just it needs to be easier. It needs to work. If we could have a Zoom that worked, we'd all be happy having Zoom. OK.
So the one thing that I wanted to make clear, and I don't know, and I apologize, I was a little late today, is for non-Brown Act committee meetings, and Craig and I touched on this in the March meeting, is the goal is that there, the approach, the criteria, so with the columns that we had both last meeting and in this document here, would be consistent. So whatever happens for noticing minutes, under read the list, agenda setting, et cetera, for the non-Brown Act committee, we need to figure out the consensus amongst the group for the approach there. Because it can't be one non-Brown Act committee does it one way and another non-Brown Act committee does it another way.
Although, as with the, as with the minutes, might it be that there's an established necessary minimum?
Minimum.
And if they wanted to do something above that, they could.
Right.
That would, that would be.
Right.
So there could be some variability among, among committees. It just, they couldn't skip the essential things.
For the minutes in particular, which holds true for everything. We have to revisit that. But I guess the point being that in order for it to be manageable, we need to have consistency in each of the three columns. So just a reminder there, you know, because some people who were at the last meeting weren't at this meeting and vice versa. And that's going to be a really important aspect to manage this whole thing. For instance, you can't have some non-Brown Act committees post their agenda a day before, other ones do it five, you know, five days before. So just so staff and operations can work consistently. So I'm concerned that we've lost too many people in this meeting to kind of have this discussion. And so maybe we move this to the next agenda.
OK. And I think it was preferences, not how it should be, yeah. OK.
The only reason I like that idea, but at the same time, I, none of this is set in stone right now. And there are some be, might have said they want to be non-Brown Act and would flip once they kind of understand, you know, we get to consensus on the middle column or vice versa. So I still think it's helpful to keep it together as a group.
You, you, you might want to just take a leap of faith and, and actually fill out this table a little more just to get texts, like actually say, this is the sample of the minutes we think is minimum. And, you know, let people comment on it. I appreciate you trying to be so responsive and get input, but sometimes there is a benefit of just doing the James Madison and coming with the finished document. So.
Or draft at least. So that the other, the, and I like very much the philosophy of the roundtable. But I think there is something about then, you know, one thing gets said nine times, and the person who's not here didn't say some other important thing. And if we, if we have drafts to work from, we're more likely to make progress. Yeah, and maybe, maybe we could have a subgroup that would work on that. Subcommittee, shall we call it, to be official? A subcommittee of the committee of committees. This is a committee of committees.
Craig, because you stepped out of the room, just to bring you up to speed. I think what we're going to do is put a pause on further discussion. And what we had talked about doing is having a more detailed discussion about the criteria within non-Brown Act. But I think because we've lost a lot of people here today, we decided we're going to table that at this point. We're just discussing what the next agenda item might look like. And the suggestion was that we come in with a straw man, more detail within the middle column about what each of these things would look like as a starting point.
Yeah, I think we've gotten enough input. I think we could do that. I mean, the goal was not for the council to decide this. This was, I mean, my only objective here was to make it easier to volunteer. That was it. Like, and beyond that, I have, you know, you know.
Right, well, I think Jennifer's point is good, and I think that we can, if we had a working, a little working committee of Jennifer, me, and the two get sort of draft a few things to draft, fill out the agenda. And maybe have the, maybe have the plan be six to 7:30, not, yeah.
And can I just thank Craig and Sarah and Judith? Because I, I know you guys are really busy, and I really appreciate you taking the time to try to make the committees work a little better. And we do appreciate it.
OK, yeah, I just. Thank you, sir.
All in favor. Bye, everybody.